We were speculating.
The Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to be back in the council chamber after, do we have three meetings away in virtual council?
Yes, we did.
Yes, so just nice to have you all here. I sat here alone, all alone. I think I had one IT person. Ryan was fantastic, but otherwise I was alone. And you all were in your homes, so it's just nice to see you in person.
It's good to be back.
Yeah. We had a good socially-distanced workshop downstairs this evening before this meeting. And maybe just for the sake of the public watching, if you can just scan the audience for a moment, just to show that people are here tonight and socially distancing, so you all can wave to whoever you're on TV right now. So, thank you. Again, appreciate being here and being here with all of you. So, now that we're back together, we do have something called Open Podium, where we, prior to our council-recorded meeting, we invite the public to come in and just have that opportunity to address us, really on any issue that's not connected or related directly to the agenda. Sometimes things just come up. So, I'd like to read just an announcement about that, that "Open Podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government before each council meeting." And the council meetings are typically the first and third Tuesday of each month, but during the summer months, we have this one meeting in the middle of June, July, and August. "Open Podium" is between 6:30 and 6:55. If you wish to speak at Open Podium, it's helpful if you can contact the city manager's office prior to the meeting at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter. That helps us be prepared, better prepared for you. "If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished," the mayor, "I will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open Podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about Open Podium, please do contact the city manager's office." So, tonight, we do have, well, I guess, a couple here proclamations and presentations. So, Mr. Getcho, I think I'll turn it over to you to introduce the Human Rights Awards part of our meeting this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and council members. We have several of our commission members here tonight and award recipients for our annual Human Rights Awards. So, I believe the festivities are kicked off with the chair, our Chair of our Human Rights and Diversity Commission, Greg Leeper.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Manager. It's good to see that you've joined me in the beard club. Loving the COVID beards.
I was gonna say that, that I am trying to keep up with you. I will never be able to, but it looks nice on you.
Folks like myself and Jay Lotthammer, we go 365 days a year. No, it's good to see you. And thank you for, thank you for having us tonight. So, on behalf of the Eden Prairie Human Rights and Diversity Commission, it's my honor to address the city council, city staff, and community members as we both reaffirm our commitment to diversity and inclusion by reading the Eden Prairie Manifesto and as we recognize individuals and organizations who exemplify this spirit through their work by awarding the annual Eden Prairie Human Rights Awards. As a commission that advises the city council on matters of human rights and diversity, we would be remiss if tonight we did not acknowledge and address recent nearby events, if only briefly, in this context. Less than three weeks ago, on May 25th, we learned of the tragic and unjust killing of Mr. George Floyd at the intersection of 38th and Chicago in Minneapolis, a mere 14 miles from where we gathered this evening. His death is indeed a tragedy, and though it did not occur in our city, we grieve his loss as fellow human beings, and we are moved to act. We are heartened by the fact that Mr. Floyd's death has been a catalyst for introspection and action toward justice and peace across our state, nation, and world. And it is our hope that Mr. Floyd's death will also prompt us toward the same examination and progress as individual Eden Prairie citizens and as a city. We know this will be a journey, but as one step on this journey, I would like to read once again the Eden Prairie Manifesto as both a statement of our collective commitment and as a statement of who we aspire to increasingly be as a community. The Eden Prairie Manifesto was adopted by the city council 26 years ago on May 18th, 1993, and was reaffirmed by the council on January 4th, 2000. It reads as follows: "We, as representatives of Eden Prairie businesses, city government, educational and religious institutions, accept special roles and responsibilities in fostering diversity in our community. We are dedicated to upholding the rights of every individual in our community to freedom, dignity, and security, regardless of religious affiliation, race, ethnic heritage, gender, age, sexual orientation, physical or mental ability, or economic status. Representing all sectors of Eden Prairie, we publicly declare our intentions to, one, continue the development of a multicultural community which will not tolerate acts of harassment and intolerance; two, to establish, communicate, and encourage community standards that respect diversity; and, three, to promote acceptance and respect for individuals in an atmosphere of caring for others." Each year, it is the commission's privilege to recognize both individuals and organizations who embody these commitments through the presentation of the Eden Prairie Human Rights Awards. These awards are the affirmation of the good work being done in this arena by individuals and community organizations, and we hope also an inspiration to others in our community, an encouragement to others to go and do likewise. And so, it is our privilege to present the 2020 Human Rights Awards to four deserving recipients.
This is as tall as me. Okay. Good evening, council members and mayor. It is my honor and privilege this evening to be presenting this year's Human Rights Awards in the Individual category to Zina Nurkadi, who is here standing next to me. A few words about her. Zina upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by devoting time and energy to community-building initiatives which promote multicultural understanding amongst us city's residents. Through her work at the Eden Prairie Education Center, she has been an extremely strong advocate for English language learners, or ELL students. Furthermore, through her work with the New American Development Center, Zina has promoted affordable housing initiatives, entrepreneurship, and business development programs. She has been actively involved in volunteer work aimed at issues impacting community elders, empowering Somali women, and addressing human rights issues, many human rights issues. We are grateful for her ongoing commitment to human rights and tireless work to promote understanding and embrace diversity. With that, it is indeed an honor tonight, and it's my honor and privilege to present this year's Human Rights Award in the Individual category to Zina. So, with that, Zina would just like to say a few words, and I would encourage her to just walk up and find your award, because they're randomly placed. Make sure you pick the right award, and there you go. Zina, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and everyone in this room. There's not much to say. Just one thing is, we are so grateful to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, to our leaders, to everyone in this city who make it a wonderful place to live. And we will continue doing what we do, and that's what we believe. We stand for our belief, and we always be teaching our kids how to continue making it a good place. So, thank you to all of you. On behalf of everyone who's recipient tonight, we are so grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the more rewarding parts of being mayor in a time like this, pre-COVID, would be that I would be down there shaking hands and congratulating, and I miss that. But there could not be a more deserving recipient than Zina and her wonderful husband, Mohammed Noor. Together, they are some of the finest citizens that Eden Prairie has. So, we appreciate you being with us. And her son, who I did not harm too much in sixth grade, or didn't mess up too badly, he's quite successful as a senior at the U. And so, just wonderful to have your family here in Eden Prairie. Next.
Hi. Dear Mayor and council members, thank you very much for having us here. My name is Shahram Misagi. I'm one of the members of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission. Really happy to be here. And it's truly an honor to present the Youth Award to Claire Willett. Unfortunately, she's not here. I wish she was here in person, but I still would like to share some, a few words about her. Claire Willett upholds the value of Eden Prairie Manifesto by using her voice to advocate for those that are marginalized based on race, religion, ethnicity, and national origin. In partnership with the World Without Genocide, she has worked to bring awareness to discrimination and violence against women. She has given presentation to her peers and community groups, including a presentation to the Eden Prairie Human Rights and Diversity Commission to encourage support for the UN Convention on Elimination of Discrimination Against Women. She has also brought awareness to the danger of child marriage by speaking at the press conference at Minnesota State Capitol. She is a shining example of a young adult that uses her voice to participate in civic engagement, and we look forward to seeing where her path takes her. Again, it's my honor to be here, present the award to her, wish she was here in person. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Next.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. My name is Phil Sky. I am one of the commissioners on the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, and it is my pleasure to be here this evening to award the nonprofit award to Esther Holmes. Esther Holmes upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by providing safe, stable housing to pregnant women and single mothers experiencing crisis or exiting homelessness. Esther Holmes is committed to building caring relationships that promote family stability. Their staff live onsite at their Eden Prairie location and provide the residents with practical support, advocate for their clients' goals and dreams, and offer encouragement when life feels overwhelming. They use their experience to advocate for housing solutions and participate in civic and organizational partnerships. By creating a community of support, Esther Holmes makes it possible for women and young children to thrive. And with that, it's my pleasure to present the nonprofit award to Esther Holmes. Emily is here this evening and will be accepting that award.
Emily, do you want to say a few words as well? You don't have to, but we'd like that.
Well, I think our little friend Kingston here was saying a few words. He'll be celebrating his first birthday in a couple days, and so, we're just honored to kind of get to receive this award. At the same time, we just celebrate the families. So, thank you so much. We're really pleased.
Thank you for all you do. Thank you. I believe one more.
Hello again. You have Shahram Misagi. This time, I'm very fortunate to have our recipient here. I'm really excited to present the Business Award to Umei Boutique. Again, just a few words about the boutique and their participation. As a local small, as a local small business that is owned by a female entrepreneur from the Eden Prairie immigrant community, Umei Boutique features clothing styles from all over the world and provides options for men, women, and children. Their location at Eden Prairie Center allows Somali-American residents to shop locally for their closing needs. They encourage community conversations and relationship building by hosting events such as World Hijab Day, when they welcome the community to learn more about hijab and showcase different styles of hijabs, turbans, and scarves. We are thrilled to welcome Umei's Boutique to Eden Prairie Center and are honored to recognize them tonight. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Umi, so I was named after the store by my mom. We've opened recently, and it's gonna be, I think, one year since we've opened. So, my mom couldn't be here today, so I'm here representing. But we would like to thank you, each and every one of you, for this amazing opportunity. Yeah, thank you. Thank you once again.
Are you modeling right now clothing from the store?
Yes.
It's very beautiful, so.
Thank you.
That was great. Any final words from the HRDC? Okay. Just want to say thank you to our Human Rights and Diversity Commission, one of our several commissions that advises the city council in areas of expertise that, as smart as we sometimes think we are, we need a lot of help. So, thank you so much for all that you do as well. I really appreciate that. Besides kind of beating me out on the beard thing, you also read the manifesto, which I was going to read, but I'm really glad that you did. What I do want to comment on prior to having this council reaffirm, just to say that in 1993, we were a whole lot different city, and the council at the time, led by Mayor Doug Tempest, I think had a lot of foresight and a lot of connectivity, really, to the community of that day and saw in the future what was happening, to come forward with creativity with this manifesto. I'm really proud of what they were part of. It has been reaffirmed, actually, back on July 18th, 1995, under Mayor Gene Harris. It was reaffirmed January 4th, 2000. I'm not, I know that we've read it and talked about. I'm not sure if we've actually voted on it in between, but it feels like every council, especially when we get one or two new members, we have this opportunity at least to vocally reaffirm. But tonight, we're actually going to vote just to reaffirm our commitment to what this manifesto represents. So, council, do you want to add anything, or do you want to go ahead and just, we don't have it in our agenda exactly, but I would entertain a motion and a second. And then, if you want to add something prior to that or after the motion's made, that's fine, too.
May I add more?
All right. Excitement here.
Mayor, I'm more than happy to have a motion.
To reaffirm.
Reaffirm the manifesto.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll second it. Okay. Prior to the vote, is there anyone that would like to make a comment?
Yes, I think this is very important for the community. It's important for the culture that we try to defend. And in this day and age, in the last couple of weeks, it's more important than any ever, because we really do care about every one of our citizens, and we really think it's important that everybody has the same rights and the same opportunities in our community.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll just make one brief comment. I just think, you know, we've received a lot of, all of us on the council have received a lot of input from our residents about the incidents in the past and worrying about, you know, how we're, how we're doing our policies for policing and things like that. And what I always tell people is that, you know, I think Eden Prairie has always had an environment where we're fostering from the top down, through all of our departments, through all of our city staff, everyone has the same, same principles, and we're all following the manifesto. And so, I think that really goes to show that our police are using policies and procedures that are in sync with the principles in the manifesto. And so, in terms of looking at making changes to our police department and our policing policies and procedures, you know, there's always room for improvement in anything, but I would say that what we've been doing is really in line with this, and we really don't need to make these drastic changes like some areas need to do, some cities. So, I'm very proud that we are, we are doing this tonight.
Okay. With no further discussion, all those in favor of reaffirming the Eden Prairie Manifesto, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimously passes. We join the councils of our past, the four former mayors in affirming, reaffirming, along with all the city councils. One of the ways that we acknowledge and recognize the commission members that spend anywhere from one to three years, plus if they come another term, six years, nine years of commitment to the city, one of the small benefits is that we have each year a dinner, that we get together and acknowledge the commissioners, and then also the ones that are leaving that particular year. Well, with COVID, we were not able, obviously, to get together. And so, tonight, not quite as good as a dinner where we call people up and give them an award, but we nonetheless are going to acknowledge our commissioners that have served the city of Eden Prairie. And so, I think the best thing to do, there's several, a lot, and we'll just, one at a time, maybe start with Councilmember Naurian, with Kate Lowens, and we'll have you read her little paragraph bio, and then we'll move on down the line.
Thank you, Mayor. Kate Lowens. Kate Lowens served on Sustainability Commission for three years, beginning in 2017, and served as the vice chair for one year. Kate was collaborative and forward-thinking. She had great ideas to share. Given her expertise in communications, Kate provided great suggestions for public engagement and the message, message used in educating the public. As the vice chair, she worked with the chair to move the work plan, work plan forward. Kate's service on the Sustainability Commission is missed.
All right, I'll go with Anna Anderson. Anna Anderson served on the Sustainability Commission for three years, beginning in 2017, and served as chair for one year. Anna was enthusiastic and results-oriented. She always had a positive attitude and encouraged everyone to have fun. The commission accomplished many work plan items under Anna's leadership. With her background, she had a style that everyone respected. Anna was always inclusive so that everyone would be part of the successes of the commission. Anna's service on the Sustainability Commission is missed.
Raj Agarwal. Raj was actively involved in the Flying Cloud Airport Commission during his two years, contributing to various discussions around the airport. In fact, he was so active and well-respected that he was appointed to the, to be a commissioner representing Eden Prairie to the Metropolitan Airport Commission, so he stepped down from our Flying Cloud Airport Commission.
Daniel Kylie. Dan was involved in the Flying Cloud Airport Commission during his three years, contributing to various discussions around the airport. Dan stepped down from this commission after moving out of the city.
Ramatpa Sumra. I apologize if I mispronounced that. Ramatpa Sumra served as Human Rights and Diversity Commissioner from 2017 to 2020. As a commissioner, Ramat spoke passionately about racial justice and equity, and her perspective allowed the commissioner to move broadly, to move more broadly, consider the experience of all residents. We appreciate the years of service that Ramat devoted to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission and her commitment to our community.
Balu Ayer. Balu Ayer served on the Planning Commission from 2019 to 2020. Through Balu served for the short time, though Balu served for the short time, he brought a community value perspective and emphasis on high-quality development standards. Thank you for your contribution, Balu.
Christopher Villareal. Christopher Villareal served on the Planning Commission from 2017 to 2020. As a commissioner, Chris was involved in the review of significant projects such as the Castle Ridge Development, Elevate at Southwest Station, and Shields. He was also involved in the Aspire Eden Prairie 2040 process. Chris encouraged the commission and developers to provide sustainable options within a project and plan for long-term impacts. Thank you for your service, Chris.
Chuck Weber. Charles Weber was a Planning Commission member for two terms from 2014 to 2020. Chuck provided input on a variety of development projects during that time, ranging from single-family residential, commercial office, and multifamily residential. He was also involved in the preparation of Aspire Eden Prairie 2040 from beginning to end and represented Eden Prairie on the Southwest LRT Community Advisory Committee. Chuck brought a perspective to the commission that balanced high-quality development standards and community needs and expectations. Thank you for your service to Eden Prairie.
Leonard Peszek. Leonard has served for three terms on the Parks, Recreation, and National Resources Commission. His knowledge of the community, passion for outdoor activities, and sense of fairness has helped the commission provide sound guidance to staff.
John Rahman. John served for three years on the Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources Commission. John's passion for community building and volunteerism has shown through in many of his comments and suggestions. He's someone who has helped the commission explore all sides of the issue.
Thank you. I think for the next, we have the next section, we want to honor and thank the students that have served as student commissioners over the last year. And they're obviously clumped into the commissions that they served on. So, Councilmember Naurian, would you start and just read the names under Flying Cloud? There's a lot of names on here, and they're somewhat, at times, difficult to pronounce, so give us some slack. Bear with us. We'll do our best.
Thank you, Mayor. Flying Cloud Airport Commission Student Commissioners: Evelyn Halm, Hemler, Troy Johnson, Amam Kalyanam. Amam Kalyanam.
Heritage Preservation Commission: Maya Chavez, Elise Ferlauto, Lily Hyland, and Aditya Nadihar.
Good job. Human Rights and Diversity Commission: Najma Ali, Stavin Bhakta, Winfred Homde Souza, Nicole Meyer, and Kapri Stidl.
Parks, Recreation, and National Resources Commission: Shay Juniga, Riley Marble, Tene Solunka, Zachary Spears, and Simon Vragar.
Sustainability Commission: Rohin Gurmohre.
Gurumurti.
Again, apologize.
Gurumurti.
Mina Kim, Abhiram, Nala Mali, Kirsten Oring, and Niall Timberman.
All right. Again, we wish we could all be together, and thank you more properly, but we really do appreciate all the volunteers, really, all volunteers across the city at any given time. Fourth of July volunteers, we just have a massive amount. But to the people that spend time coming monthly, sometimes twice a month, to commission meetings, we really appreciate their input and their, their commitment to our city. So, thank you. All right. We're gonna move down the agenda now. We have approval of the agenda. I have, I want to add something to council member reports as a, just offering to all of you. I'm assuming you might have come wanting to talk about systemic racism. If not, that's fine, but a couple, like, open meeting law, I can't, couldn't have talked to all of you. I know at least one other does. So, we'll add that as an agenda item. I'll open that up. Does anybody else have anything else to add to the agenda, or Mr. Getcho? No. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda with my addition, and then a second?
Move to approve the agenda as amended?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Minutes, are there any? Minutes, are there any, either of the minutes and any items or parts that you'd like to question or edit or correct, or could we approve both together? Okay, hearing no corrections, is there a motion to approve both of the minutes?
So moved.
All right, I'll take that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, no further conversation, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we have no reports of advisory boards or commissions, consent calendar, does anyone have any items A through L that they wish to either temporarily pull and discuss or actually pull from the consent calendar? Okay, then is there a motion for approval of items A through L on the consent calendar?
Move approval of items A through L on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can you further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, no public hearings or meetings this evening. We do have payment of claims. Anybody have any items that are paid out that you wish to question or find out more information about? Okay, is there a motion to approve the payment of claims?
I'm moved approval of payment of claim as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. All right, we do have a couple items under ordinances and resolutions. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. We have, we have one item under ordinance resolutions and we do have appointments and report. So the, you may recall from the discussions with the construction of the light rail transit and all the station discussions through previous workshops, that there was a discussion to rename just the east-west section of Eden Prairie Road as a Town Center Station was being constructed or would be constructed, not the north-south portion of Eden Road that connects to Singletary, to maybe create more of a sense of place and less confusion in terms of where Eden Road connects in and out of that area. And so our staff did some outreach with one or two of the businesses that would be affected by the name change, and they were supportive of the name change from Eden Road for that east-west section to Town Center Place. And, you know, as I said, it's a, it's an ordinance change that's required by the council, it is not a public hearing that's required, and you'd be taking action on a first reading, a second reading would have to come back at a future meeting, most likely on the consent agenda.
Mr. Getcho, anytime there's a street name change, it might impact someone along that road, and if it's a residential road, there's checks that have to be read, whatever. But have we contacted absolutely all when I was listening to what you said there? Does that mean everybody that would be impacted that's on that road, advertising, marketing, anything would?
Correct.
Has been?
Yes, we have.
And there's no disagreement? Great, that's good to know. Council, any further questions, discussion? Yes.
Yeah, when you change a name, how do you inform Google?
I was just going to ask that.
Because any address there, people trying to reach now the old name with a new name, is it going to be confusion?
Well, we've done a few name changes in the past, and I'm not sure of the exact process of having it updated with Google, but we'll do that. Do you have a, do you have a contact?
I don't either, but first thing I was thinking about that, you know, when you go somewhere you don't know, you do Google Map or?
No, they're all knowing, they just, they just change it.
They'll figure it out.
They know what we're doing right now.
They do. They know before we do.
No, that is a good point, though.
Yeah, I can follow up.
Someone in IT just?
I'll follow up.
Check that out. We already have enough wayfinding problems around them all. We don't want to complicate that. Okay, let's, no further discussion? Let's have a motion in a second.
Move to approve the first reading of an ordinance changing the east-west portion of Eden Road to Town Center Place from its intersection with Flying Cloud Drive to the termini of the future road extension related to the Southwest LRT project and the Town Center Station.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Won't you all be freaked out tonight if you put it in your phone and it's there? I'm serious, it's there.
We, no, you need to approve second reading.
Oh.
Give it a month, we've got, we've got a month.
They anticipate, trust me. All right, we do have appointments of students, new student commissioners, the new, I want to say crop, I don't know if that's not appropriate, but the new group of students that will be representing other students on these commissions. So it's a long motion, why don't each of us again take one bullet of it? So it's a motion move to, and councilmember Freiberg, do you want to start it and just read the first bullet and we'll just go down the line?
Move to appoint to the Sustainability Commission Amanda Schlap, Anisha Singer-Wadia, Elian Ritschla, and Pranav Varhu.
Good job. You did, you sounded a little Slavic, but I mean, it was good, you did good, so go ahead, councilmember Nelson.
Point to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission. Abshur Noor, Evelyn Helmer, Pranav Kartha, and Yash Salunka.
Okay, this is definitely taxing all of us this evening. It's probably the most stressful part of the evening for everybody up here, trust me. So move to appoint to the Heritage Preservation Commission Rav Sabaya, Anna Patton, Finn Bloch, Maya Chavez, and Sarthak Agarwal.
Appoint to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission Ifra Ida, Gillian Pearson, Nadia Johnson, Rashmi Akari, Sihan Aiden, and Serena Jane.
Appoint to Park, Recreation, and Natural Resources Commission Garen McDowell, Jake Freeland, Jessica Howard, John Huttel, Tanai Salunka, Sita Pam. Pam.
Okay, I'll take a second, actually do a second and I'll say something. Anybody second that motion?
Second.
Okay. I just want to add that as difficult some of the pronunciation is, how exciting that we have a city right now that we are bringing in student commissioners with incredible wonderful diversity in their names. And that means they're also bringing in their cultures and exposing us all to this multicultural, United States of America, but multicultural world. So I'm, I may make fun of our inability to pronounce it, but we're all truly very excited to have in our city the wonderful mix of, of all of us from across the world that have landed here and made Eden Prairie home, so. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. I, again with open meeting law and just to remind people in the audience, but also out in the community, that all the business of an elected body has to be done in the full view of the public. So a majority of any elected body cannot go off to a coffee shop and be together and plan, you know, plans of action without it being in, in full view of the public. So I can contact one council member on an issue and that's it. I, I think I've tried to reach out to each of you on different issues now and then, so Kathy Nelson and I did chat on this idea that I'm going to talk about, and that's all I've talked about with anybody. So I don't know what some of you are coming with tonight, maybe nothing, maybe something. I have been concerned ever since the incident with George Floyd, the murder, I've been concerned that this is a watershed moment in American history that every community in the United States of America has to take advantage of, that's even making that positive, his death, it's not positive, but we need to make something good come out of this for, for his sake, but for the sake of all Black Americans and all Americans of any type of diversity. So I, I wanted to, thoughts were going through my head, so I'm going to share something that I came up with and then I want to open up to all of you and you can share your ideas and maybe we leave this meeting sending staff away to come back to us in July with options, plans of, things that we could be doing. Maybe there's some things we can decide on tonight. I'm not, generally we don't bring things up and vote on them on, in the same night, we just don't do that. We, we allow time to think about it. But what I'm going to suggest here might be so plain and obvious that you, you might, I don't want to flavor it here, but I'll just share. I, I think as busy as the Human Rights and Diversity Commission is and your plate is full, I'm not suggesting you wipe it clean and change course. I'm thinking that much of what you're already, I'm looking at the chair now, but I'm thinking much of what you've already got on your plate might fit what I'm going to suggest. It might be, though, something that you do move some things aside and begin to concentrate on this. But I, I think here in the City of Eden Prairie, we need to convene people, and I hesitate to even say to have a conversation because Black America has heard that way too many times and nothing occurs. But it has to start with a conversation, but what I would suggest that I'd like to see the HRDC do is to, to get together and develop a plan of action, something that's actionable, that Eden Prairie can address systemic racism, structural racism, institutional racism, call it systemic inequality, whatever, right? But look at the systemic racism that is in Eden Prairie, if, well, we know it exists, I don't mean an if, but how it exists here. Many, all of us have received emails on all sides of the whole police department issue. You know, many, some people are scared and they're saying, don't touch the police department, we need to remain safe. Other people are like, defund the police department, a few extreme ones, you know, get rid of the police department, the very few of those, but, but people have to remember that, and I'll echo what Brad started out saying earlier, that, well, I'm going to put words in your mouth in one point, but our number one role really is public safety. We're not going to not preserve public safety for the people of Eden Prairie. Now, how, how we do that and can we do that better? Absolutely, right? But I would like in this overall look that the HRDC leads, to look at how systemic racism shows up in our city, in terms of city government and city offices and city staff, how it shows up in our fire department, how it shows up in our police department. I know the schools, I know this very well, since the early 90s, we've been looking at white privilege and systemic racism. Doesn't mean that it's been beat or solved, far from that. I got a wonderful note from a young Somali girl who is going to be a junior in high school, and she put together a group of seven or eight Somali young women to meet with me virtually about a week and a half ago, and they shared what's going on at the high school in their perception. That's the most powerful part here. It's not, it's not about a, you know, a 65-year-old white guy's perception. I have my perceptions, but it's really about getting deeply into the perceptions and the feelings and the fears of every person in Eden Prairie. So I would like as one of the things that maybe we wait till July, maybe tonight, we, it's, so again, I'll really leave up to all of you, but I would like the HRDC to be tasked with, like we did with affordable housing, like we did with climate change, like we've done with entrepreneurship, like we've done with these other groups that get together and they basically come out with actionable plans on a topic or an issue, I'd like the HRDC to come up with an actionable plan for how Eden Prairie can confront, face, and, and deal with, and then implement solutions to addressing systemic racism. And, and I just took a quote or two out of, off the internet today, but just, just again to, to think about for anybody that's sitting there going, you know, systemic racism, we've heard this a lot, we know, we know there's racism built in, but even, and this maybe even sounds like from a business perspective, I like some of these words, but systemic racism creates these disparities that are actually measurable out, and there's outcomes that we can measure that. You can look at high school and college graduation rates, you can look at homeownership, you can look at retirement savings and wealth gaps, you can look at rates of incarceration, you can look at unemployment rates, and, and it's not enough just to try to blame victims or blame subsets. I mean, why do those disparities across our nation at institutional levels everywhere, at every level? Why do they exist? Particularly for Black America, but also for Asian Americans, for Hispanic Latino Americans, for the GLTQIA community. We have such horrendous us and them hatred really growing in our country that if we don't, at every level of government, and it starts in every municipality, if we don't do what we can do, then we're not stepping up to this time, this, this moment in time when, as everybody said since the murder of George Floyd that, that evening, something has to change, something. So that's, that's my, my plan is just to, it's just a beginning, just get the HRDC engaged and tasked with beginning to lead that conversation. Now, when I talk to Kathy, she had a couple ideas, I think I'll stop right now and let you share if that's okay? And then we'll open it up and see where everyone else wants this to go, there's a lot of different ways it could go. I just wanted to get that started. So councilmember Nelson.
I agree that, I'm hoping this is the tipping point. I've seen it over the years that some things happened, everybody gets upset, but it's time we finally did something. Minimally, I'd like to see this council put together a statement, you know, starting to say we share the pain and anger and frustration of all of you regarding the death of George Floyd, and we'll commit to work to our residents' safety and well-being. But I think it needs to go beyond that, and I think it can't be just talk now. I think we actually have to change. Everyone is talking about it, thinking about it, and it's time to actually do what we've been talking about for 20, 30, even 40 years.
400.
Well, yeah, it's, but it really needs to stop now. It can't continue. I will say that our police department has had things that other departments are starting to say about now. They have de-escalation training. All our police officers are EMTs, so they're also aware of people's welfare and well-being. And it's something that other communities should do too. But maybe words from many of us could go together in a statement, but I think it's time we make it and urge other communities to do the same. Prop put out a piece that had some interesting language, said they stand for strong against racism and justice and inequality. They see in all we do to be conscious of and address the deeply entrenched practices, cultural norms, and decision-making structures that perpetuate inequalities. The school district is starting to look at it. Our own police chief put out a very good piece on the internet today about how they respond, but I don't know, we need a resolution, but I would like a statement by next meeting, and then I'd like us to start talking to other cities to make their statements, because it's not just Minneapolis's problem, or it's not just St. Paul's problem, it's the whole Twin Cities problem, and it's the whole state's problem. You can go out from there however far you want, but this is the time to change it.
I'll go.
Sure.
I do think that it is important for us as a body to recognize that some racism still does exist and that we are doing everything that we can to eliminate racism from, not only from our community, but from the broader community. And I think our, our, it's important for us to have a police department that, that values our values, and I think we do have that here. And I've, I've spoken at length with Chief Weber, Weber about that, and I feel very, very strongly that he and the department follow the, the principles and guidances of, of Eden Prairie's manifesto and, and our, our core values. And I think we do respect every, every person, and I think that is so key. I've been reaching out to police chiefs and mayors in some of our surrounding neighboring cities to talk to them about what they're doing, and I feel that many of the cities surrounding our community have very similar values and very similar training. So for example, when our police officers are trained, our, our, their, their managers, their, their supervisors are also, the chiefs are also receiving the same training. So we So we know that we have consistency in what the message is that has been given to our officers, as opposed to some of the larger departments where maybe just the officers get trained, but the, the sergeants and the, the other supervisors don't really know what training they're receiving. And I think it's so important that we pass that, not only the training down and know what the training is, but it's really about culture. You know, you can have the best policies and the best procedures in the world, but if you don't have a culture that supports that, that training and those policies and procedures, it may not happen. And I think that's where, where Eden Prairie is, is very unique, in that we really have a, truly have a culture from the council down through all of our staff that supports all of these, these tenants. And I think that is so key, that we do that, and that, so that's why I'm really proud to be a part of, of our community and, and our, our city.
Thank you, Councilmember Aho. I am, I'm going to dig deeper in, and I don't want to sound like a disagreement, so I want to compliment you first. Your heart's in a great place, and I think everybody's is up here. I think this council really does want to do the right thing here as well. I, I will say, from the words that you just said, it, it, it feels very much, and I've, I've said those words for like a white 60-year-old something man's perspective, and what I mean by that is that in the last couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to talk to a couple Hispanic-Latino women who have had run-ins. We have a great police force. We have a phenomenal police force, but it doesn't mean the perspective or the perception of a Latino woman being pulled over by a police officer is what we think it might be or should be. We have our white man perspective, but that Latino woman being pulled over does not. Doesn't mean that we're not doing the well, good job. It doesn't mean we're not trained well. It means we need, what I want Greg's commission to do, not your commission, but you lead it, I want to learn what the other perspectives are. Because I've, I've chatted with a couple Black Americans that live in Eden Prairie. In fact, I just got a call last night from a woman that was in leadership here with the school system, and here for years, retired, and she shared her perspectives. There, trust me, there's racism in Eden Prairie. Doesn't, I heard something the other day that, just because I feel I'm not racist, and I believe I'm not, I, 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 I try so hard to really empathize and put myself in the other person's perspective, but that doesn't mean that I should not be fighting against systemic racism. Just because I'm thinking I'm doing well doesn't mean that, that from a Black person's perspective, or Hispanic-Latino, or Somali, doesn't mean that that's their perception. I want to go out and learn their perception, because I think it's not as rosy out there for many of our residents as, as we think it might be, some of us think it might be. And I want to learn that and find that out. Clearly, with what's happening with violence against Black men in this nation, there's a perception problem. It can't be just written off with training. It's racism, right? There was a great letter, letter to the editor, it might have been on my phone, we're all reading so much these days, of a, a white, in fact, it was an Eden Prairie woman, so I don't know where I read it. Might have been in the Sun Current, or it might have been on my phone, but who said that her husband had evidently used a $20 bill that was counterfeit, like, two years ago, and, and the police had called, or FBI or somebody had called. And right away, she said, "Oh, he got that in a bunch of bills from a cash machine yesterday," and she told where the cash machine was. That was the end of it. That's a lot different than the way George Floyd was treated, whether George Floyd intended or not. That's not even the point, is it? I mean, the, the way that a Black person is treated in America today and fears the police, that, that's a perception we need to hear. And we need to figure out, how do we work with that perception? That's the piece that I want to hear more about. And when I met with six or seven young Somali women, that's what they shared, their feelings walking into the high school, their feelings being around police officers, their feelings being at the mall. Some of you may remember our mayor, Jean Harris, who was mayor from '94 to 2001, and in '99, she was walking in our mall, in a store, and she was tracked. She was followed by a security guard for about 10 minutes in this store, watching whether she stole something. She's our mayor, you know, so, and, and I realize that's 20 years ago, but that's not that long ago, right? So we have racism in Eden Prairie, and I, I want to find out what it feels like from the perceptions of others, and that's why I think tasking the HRDC with going out and learning the ways that we can actionably address systemic racism here in this town, in all of our different departments. And I know our police departments, I, I think is amazing, and their training is amazing, and our leadership is phenomenal. If you want to learn how different we are, talk to our chief over there in the corner about Greg Weber, about how he feels we would have done differently with George Floyd, and we would have. Because our number-one concern is the health of that person. Once they're incapacitated to the point that they're not going to hurt you if they're a suspected criminal, but at that point, if they were to say, "I can't breathe," or "I can't, I'm hurting," we would immediately attend to their physical needs. That's, that's our culture. So Brad is right. We have, we have a culture here in Eden Prairie that's amazing. It doesn't mean, though, that from the perspective of some of our diverse people here in this city, that they're seeing and feeling the same thing, so. Yes, Councilmember Narayan.
So I'm so glad you brought this up, because being one of the minority member of our council here, somehow I got a lot of calls and texts and messages. I think one of the key messages that you said was, the other perspective is sometimes very difficult to judge when others are feeling or others experiencing. So I think today, this, this country is in a fragile state. People are on the edge, and I think we have to make sure that all the people there, police are not bad. Good example, our chief today, that sent out, turned out the message. I don't know how many chiefs in different cities send out a message like our chief Weber did. That's, that's a very powerful message telling our residents that we do care, that we do train our staff, we, we have the great department, we have a great trained force, and work with you. All that, it, I felt that you made my day today, when I read it. I just, I got like a four o'clock, it's a few minutes before I came here, and it's really amazing. Also, I got, talked to Rick about just overall statistics. Now, we get around 50,000 calls, and only a couple of type of calls went up, all the other calls are dumb, in general, year over year. And that's, it's, again, the, the work our city and the police department is doing. The part I want to say is, all that good stuff, we still need to evaluate ourselves. There is an opportunity here for us to self-examination. And I think it's most important is to look at our manifesto. That should be our guiding principle. So everything that we do in our city, for policy perspective, for hiring, procedure, are we truly reflecting the manifesto in every respect? I think that's, we have an opportunity to look at that, and I think we should. Being a, I'm an engineer, I'm, I'm a data scientist, I look at data. Many times I've found, when you look at amount of data, you don't see anything wrong with it, unless you took the time to analyze it. And I think this gave us an opportunity to look at that hidden patterns that we have not seen, obviously. So we could be all think, we are all doing great, maybe there is a pattern, we are not detected, and that's the reason that other perspective, you said you was talking to a, a, a woman, and, and her perspective what a racism is, right? It's, it's the only way we can find those is deep inside, looking at the data, looking at our procedures, and evaluating and, and tuning, fine-tuning. So my recommendation, I agree with you, we have to look at, is an opportunity for us to look, and it's so important, we have to look at our training. Should we do more training? We already doing a great job. Maybe we should be a little more training on different aspect to all the different department that interface to our community. Our policies and procedures. You know, we already look at that all the time. I talked to Rick last two weeks, I don't know how many texts he got from me regard to this, this point, and, and Rick affirmed me that our policies and procedures very good, we are, you know, we meet every standard. Maybe that's not enough. We, it's an opportunity to look a little more about that, right? Can we do that? Look at our hiring policy, you know, to, to say, it, look at the stats. Are we hiring, being fair to all the community, right? Are we hiring the best people, equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity? Are we meeting all that? Legal perspective, we probably are meeting, but we need to be, go beyond in this time, and do we have that capability? What else? So engagement with the community, how we, we are, how we interacting with the community is important. Police perspective, you know, we have like coffee with the police, at the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, and I have seen police chief talking to, when I was in HRDC, police talking to HRDC Commission, how they interact. Maybe that's great, but that's not enough. We have an opportunity to do more, and what are those more? And that's where I think, Mayor, that when you assigned to Human Rights and Community to look at it, I think we should look at all of that. We should be never happy with where we are today in every perspective, and look at the data, look at the data again, and look at, see, any, any, look at last two years. I don't know how much time and energy and effort you have in the Human Rights Commission, but I think we need to look at it more deep and, and change the policies. And we set ourselves to be higher standard so that we could be, we don't want to have an experience like in Minnesota, in, in Minneapolis had, you know, with the George Floyd. We never want to have that experience in this city. How do we avoid that experience here? We just have to set more, higher standard. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Appreciate it.
No, um, yeah, I, well, just two seconds. I don't go out on Next Door very often, and I have decided not ever to respond on it. They don't have a good archival policy, I guess, for the legality of archiving all of elected officials' words and written comments. But occasionally, I'll be sent a link by a friend who says, "You got to see this," and we can't control every single person in the city, and we have racists in the city. But if you go out on Next Door, there were some really bad things written this last week. It was anti-Black, anti-Muslim. It was under the guise of LRT criticism, which, again, stirs up a lot of stuff out there, but it was, it was pretty bad stuff. So I, I think as a city, we need to figure out, what can we be doing actionably to take this on? I'm going to massacre these words of Martin Luther King Jr., but it was something around the idea that he, far from fearing the words of his enemies, he fears the silence of his friends. And, and I think if we're not speaking up, if we're not calling out when we see wrongfulness, when we see racism, when we see things that are contributing to systemic racism, then shame on us. This, this is our, I agree with people that have shared that this, this is a watershed moment, and we need to take advantage of that and do our part as Eden Prairie. So, Councilmember Freiberg.
You know, I've been listening quite a bit here, and I understand what you're saying. One, one thing that comes to mind is, sometimes the strongest statement you can make is not reinventing the wheel. We just reconfirmed tonight the Eden Prairie manifesto, a document from 1993 that's been confirmed a couple of times and is pretty pointed. Maybe it's time to strengthen that, rather than have another layer on top of it to get the message across. If we believe in our hearts what that manifesto says, with some, you know, tweaking it to what's happened, I think it's, it's something that's been, what is it, 1993? 20-some years it's been in place, maybe it's time to revise it, maybe it's time to just go that extra step within the document itself. Because I think you'll make the most impact by doing it, because it's already been reaffirmed and proven as a solid document. And Councilmember Narayan, you touched a little bit on that. I'm going to reconfirm that, I'm, I'm with you on that, because I think that's the best way to approach it and get the point across.
Thank you. So it, it sounds like I, we don't have necessarily a consensus on the path forward, and I think we'd want that, and I don't want this to be a vote thing, you know, where it's 3-2 or something. That's not right. But I, I think maybe we could task staff with coming back with some options in July that we could look at. One of them might be, maybe Greg, you get a month there of not working on it, but maybe you come back, but that's one of the options. We have the HRDC tasked with really looking at how, coming up with an actionable plan. I, the only thing I'd point out, Mark, that I would not agree with, and again, I underscore that everyone's hearts up here are in the right place. We're all trying to do the right thing and find the best way to do it. The manifesto is an incredible document. It's words, just words, and the words have not even, it's pretty good words right now, and we're not upholding it. So I'm looking, I want something more. I want something actionable, and something that actually produces outcomes and change. From the perspective of the people that are experiencing the racism, that's the piece that I don't want, and I, you know, I'm pointing out again, I'm using that loosely, I'm a, I'm a 65-year-old white guy. I don't want my perspective to rule the day. I want it to be from the perspective of every resident in the city that's experiencing their perspective and their perception. I want to hear from people, and I want to know, what does it feel like when the police officer pu, by the way, I don't like the police officer to pull me over either, I'm just saying that, throwing that out there. But I want to know the fear that comes to people differently if they have black skin versus if I'm a gray-haired white guy, and, and there are, and you, we all know that, right? There are major differences in that. Not, having nothing to do with our amazing police department, right? It's the perceptions of the people being pulled over. So I want to, I want to have that opportunity to get the actionable plan out there to address systemic racism in Eden Prairie. So if, if all of you could be okay with just a nod that staff would come back with some, here's some options, here's some variables, things we could do, things we could look at. Here's what some other communities are doing right now. You know, we're not St. Louis Park, we're not Richfield, we're not Minneapolis, certainly, we're not St. Paul. We're more like Minnetoka, I would say, maybe a little bit Hopkins, Bloomington, so find out what some other cities are doing. Because I talk to mayors regularly, there's seven of us that meet literally during the first few days of, after George Floyd's death, three to four times a day, just to keep up with what everyone was doing. So I, I have a good feel with what some of them are doing, but I don't know along this line in terms of actionable plans, and you, you have your, you have the pulse of the city manager. So if we could find that out and come back in July, you could do this, you could do this, just some options, give us some choices, we can have that conversation. Does that sound okay?
Sounds good.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you all. I really appreciate, appreciate all of you, and I know that, and again, I know you all well. Your hearts are so good, and we want not only the best for Eden Prairie, but I know we all want the best for the people of Eden Prairie, so it's really nice to work with all of you. All right. Mr. Getchow, moving on. Report of Community Development Director. We have a Highland Oaks Development Agreement Amendment proposal.
We do, Mayor and Council. It's our, our last item. Our city planner, Julie Kleema, will be providing this report and the, in the background on the issue.
Mayor's Member of the Council. In October of 2019, the city approved the Highland Oaks Development Project, which included the, all the typical plans that are approved as a part of that, including tree preservation and tree replacement. Since construction on the site has started, the city has received an application from the developer requesting that the development agreement be amended in order to allow the removal of some of the trees that were shown as preserved in the, those tree preservation plans. Specifically, the request includes removal of six trees, and five of those trees, the city is supportive of the removal and replacement, consistent with code requirements, because five of those trees largely are proposed to be removed to address grading and drainage issues. There is one tree, however, that is being requested to be removed, that city staff does not support that request, and that's why we're before you this evening. That is a 53-inch oak tree that generated a significant amount of conversation during the the public hearing process. So the developer has made that request. Staff has communicated our recommendation to the developer as well as to the council, and I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Do you have any map or chart or a picture of it, or just to show the location, or how, if it, why it needs to be removed, or what if we don't, you know, approve removing it? What happens to the, I'm assuming the pads of the homes or something?
I think staff is recommending that we keep tree number 142, which is that, that large oak tree.
I just wanted to see where that's set.
So staff has met with the developers' representatives several times onsite, and tree number 142, the significantly sized or heritage tree that's 53 inches, is located in this area. So just for reference sake, Gerard Drive is out in this area, and the new street comes in off of Gerard. So this is the location of the 53-inch oak tree that's proposed for removal. There is pine trees up in this area that they are asking to remove. As I said, that staff does support that request. And another ash tree in close proximity to the oak tree that they are proposing to remove.
So Julie, just looking at this map, it, it's nicely isolated between two homes that's not going to be impacted. So talk, talk to us, or maybe, you know, explain what the developer's perception is. Why, why would that have to be removed?
It's my understanding that the developer has communicated to city staff that removal of this tree is necessary in order to preserve some views and adjust the footprint of the new home appropriately, so that the new home is not looking directly into the windows of the existing home on the south side of the development. This is a visual of that 53-inch oak tree.
So there's a lot of little tree mass around it. I'm assuming that would go as well?
Some of that, yes.
So that changes the view shed then to the homes on the backside of that?
Potentially.
Have we spoken to the surrounding neighborhood about, about the tree removal? Not only the, the significant oak tree, but the, the other trees?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff did send a courtesy notice out to neighbors that either signed in at the public hearings, or spoke, or sent in email comments during that public process. So there may be some people that are here listening or tuning in that may have comments, but we've not received any specific comment back from them after sending out those notices.
Thank you.
And if, including the five that staff is okay with, if they are removed, are they subject to the tree replacement then? And what, what does that look like? How many trees would be replacing those?
Yes, sir. So my recollection is that if those five trees are removed, it's 64 inches of removal. And so 64 inches of tree would need to be replaced on the, on the property or within the project.
And if those trees are replaced by, those 64 inches are replaced, would, would they be able to replace them in that same general vicinity once the grading has been redone? And so, and what I'm, what I'm just looking at is, can we make sure that we have a buffer between the new, the new houses and the existing neighbors?
Mayor, members of the council, staff would certainly look at the proposed replacement plan and work toward having those trees being replaced in the general proximity. Now, depending on where drainage is being accommodated, or retaining walls, or things of that sort, it may not be 100% possible, but certainly that would be the goal.
Can you show where the five trees that you're okay with are located?
So again, this is Gerard Drive on this area. The new street comes in. This tree right here is the tree 142 that we're talking about in greater detail. This is the ash tree. And then there are two pine trees, or four pine trees actually, up in this area that are proposed for removal.
And ash trees, I mean, are subject to emerald ash borer anyway, so I wouldn't be too worried about losing an ash tree if we replace it with something that's gonna be more resilient anyway.
Sir, those trees are sitting at the top of that kind of a, not a bluff, but it's just a drop-off. And any soil retention or, you know, stability of the hillside that would be impacted if we pull those trees out?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Matt Born, the city's natural resources manager, has been out onsite several times with the developer to talk about those specific issues. So as a part of the tree replacement that would occur, we'd be looking at that as well.
Julie, I got a question, if I could please. It says here that the developer has shared with staff other versions of plans that would allow the tree number 142 to be saved. What's staff opinion on that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so there were, during site visits, plans that were shown to staff that would allow tree number 142 to be saved. Those plans were not submitted, along with the, sorry, sorry. Very good. Thank you. I never get accused of being too quiet. So when staff was meeting onsite with the developer, there were a couple of plans that were shown to staff onsite as to how tree 142 could be saved. But during conversation, it was communicated that was not the preferred option of the developer. Those were not, those plans were not submitted as part of this amendment. So unfortunately, I don't have those here to be able to show you.
But those plans may exist, you just not have seen them.
Correct.
And so we saved, the council saved that tree at our actual approval process. It had not been saved up to that point.
Correct.
So this would be a reversal of our council decision.
I don't, since I know I, you know, asked them about that tree specifically, given its size, it seemed to be a healthy, very large oak tree. And I believe we said we wanted that tree kept. And so coming back around saying, oh, we don't want to now, I don't have a whole lot of sympathy, because that was part of what the development agreement included was that tree.
I see the developer is here. Would we want to ask him about that, the options, or do you not want to open it up to that?
I, I would be fine with that. Let me ask also, is there anyone else here that would wish to speak to this? It's not a public hearing, but any of the contiguous neighbors? I didn't see any, but sure. Mr. Sweeters, why don't you come out and just share what your rationale would be and what the impacts would be if you, if, if we don't save it? Wait, I said that right?
The other way around.
Whatever. You, you, yes. If you wouldn't mind coming up to the mic, or if you don't want to.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I thought there was somebody.
Oh, no. The developer, you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Steve Sweeters, owner of Wooddale Builders. And so, yes, we went through planning and city council conversations about saving that tree. We were asked to look at it. We did look at it. We came back and said we, we don't think we can save it. Then we were told, you need to save it. So we went back and so forth and so on. So without that, the, some of the most significant things that are impacting 142, and let me clarify that tree 142. It is not a 53-inch oak. It is three trees grown together that are all split separately that, that make that tree up. It is not a 53-inch oak tree. I went out there even again this evening, double-checked it, and I've said that, but it is not one big tree. I mean, there are trees, can you see my map here? I don't know if I can highlight that, but I did meet with, well, first of all, I want to point out, this is the tree that we're talking about, and the city was in agreement to take this 14-inch tree down, which really impacts the rear of this particular unit. This 142, which is probably within 20 feet of this unit, and before the, the plan that we were going with and trying to save this tree, all the drainage was to come through this area here. And there was a huge retaining wall that they had designed, where all the water's running into the retaining wall. If you go out there and if you look at the site, all the water, and this is the new plan that we developed, if we take down this tree, all the water's gonna go this way and around this unit, and all the water's gonna go from here back this way. These trees that are up here are on a huge mound. They hugely impact water flow through this area. By taking those down, we can ease the grade, because the grade at the top where these trees are dramatically drops after that. So we can ease that grade down and get all that water to run through there. By taking this 42-inch tree down, we can grade in all of this area, right in here, are all scrub trees other than that 42-inch tree. Now, keep in mind, it's three trees growing together. And then you have, behind them, you have a 14-inch, a 27, a 27, which are beautiful trees, and all of that will be opened up, and all of these trees that are here in the circle are all being saved. Keeping in mind, this development, we lowered it 17, 18 feet. We took a lot of trees down. That's a true statement. But we also saved a lot of perimeter trees, huge trees around the whole perimeter. If you go out to the site today, you'll see it's completely treed all the way around the whole site. So we've saved a lot of trees. One of the main issues here today, too, for this development, you know, side-loaded garages, three-car garages, walkouts, you know, we're okay. We have three or four lots that are daylights, and we're okay with that. But we can't have full basement units. That isn't working, especially on, this is the highest lot of our neighborhood, and which is Lot 6 and then Lot 5. And the water needs to flow around this lot. It can't go through the middle of lots and through the middle of, you know, into Lot 5. Just doesn't work that way. So if somebody from staff and people want to come out, I'd be more than happy to explain. But it's not that significant a tree based on everybody's comments. And it's not in, it's, it's in good shape, but it's not a full blossomed oak tree with big branches and stuff. It's, it's, it's not that beautiful. I guess that's.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Oh, of Mr. Sweeters or of staff?
I have a question for the developer. So I still not clear why we cannot keep the tree, what, what, in terms of development perspective, is that too close to the house? The units, is that, and because of that, water cannot flow properly? I'm trying to find out what, what is the reason?
My main fear is we're gonna do all of this stuff to grade around it and get the water to flow, and it's gonna die. I mean, it's, it's umbrella is, branch umbrella is probably 20 feet out, and from this foundation to that tree, you know, we're probably 25 feet away from it. Well, why can't I tip the house and turn it completely the other way? I can't get into the garage with a side-loaded garage anymore. I've got it this tipped as much as I can get it, and to still get the water to flow around on the backside on this side. And we're, you know, it's a significant lot, and we're significantly away from the property line there already. So with those two things, it's the likelihood of it making it and trying to grade and get the water to come through here, which they're predicting, or which the original grading plan was showing. I, you know, I've worked with trees in my 47 years, and the likelihood of that tree making it is slim.
Oak trees are a little bit particular, and if you disturb their, the surrounding dirt around them, a lot of times it will kill them. So I would be concerned about it living through that, too.
And I would comment further, you know, we are supplying, or we're replacing a significant amount of trees. We're gonna go in with the idea of bringing in big spaded trees, like huge evergreens, like 10 to 12, 15-inch caliber trees. And it would be beautiful to, to set the stage in there, clearing this out. Because we have so many back trees throughout the whole neighborhood, you know, we gotta have space for the new trees, and we don't want to bring in all these 3, 4-inch caliber trees. It's just gonna, it's gonna be way too many trees. We gotta bring in the big, bigger trees, so, and that's what our goal is, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeters. Can we ask of staff, or do you want of Mr. Sweeters?
No, I just want, I, to get my support on that, as far as, there's a big difference from what you said, a 53-inch, one tree, multiple trees. Has Matt looked at, Matt Born has looked at this?
That's what I want to ask staff. I want Mr. Sweeters maybe to go ahead and sit down, and we can ask staff, because I'd really like to hear from, is that fine?
Because there is a difference. I understand that. So we'll go further.
Let's learn from staff what, if they think it can be saved, let's learn what they think, and then we'll be able to weigh that. So thank you, Mr. Sweeters. So staff, could you help us out here? And why do you think it should be saved? And then also, how do you, how do you help with this water issue? Because that's problematic. And then what do you think about the health of the tree, and will it survive? Go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm relaying some things from Matt Born, who's been out there onsite multiple times and has seen some of the grading. I did ask Matt the quality of the tree, and as Mr. Sweeters said, there are a lot of little trees that have grown around it. It just hasn't been maintained over time. So once you clear that out, the picture doesn't show what would be revealed as, as that oak tree. Obviously, that size of an oak tree, we've deemed that significant. Matt, I'll give you a little perspective of, you're familiar with Starine Lake Building, the new building, and how we worked around those oak trees that are there to save them, and yet they're pretty close to where the grading had to be. And so Matt has a good perspective on where you need to stop, where you need to start. So I think he understands the grading plan, and, which is part of his recommendation, that the oak does not significantly impact the grading plan. It would not be significantly impacted by where the house would be. You certainly do take into consideration where the drip line is, and where the roots then do potentially flow from that. So his, his expertise, his recommendation, seeing it onsite, talking with the developer's engineer, is that that's a, it's a viable oak tree. It's of our standard as a, as a very large historic-type tree, and that it has a very good opportunity to stay and to live through what would happen around it.
Thank you. Julie, what's still unclear to me is staff's perspective on, on the water issue, because if, what Mr. Sweeters said is that if that tree stays, you can't get the water going east. You can get it going west down that hill if you take out the five trees that were permitting, but you can't get it going east. So what's your answer to that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when Matt met onsite with the developer and his engineer, there were several alternatives that would have either, well, would have saved the tree, but would have put in place grading and drainage options that would allow that tree to be saved and, you know, address any grading. Because as, as the developer said, you don't want the drainage running right into the retaining wall. So they would need to plan around that if that tree is to be saved.
And your professional opinion is that that can work with these two houses there and the, where the water needs to go? Because we all know there's been horror stories when developments have been built and the water didn't go where it was supposed to go.
Understood, understood. There may need to be some other tweaks to the plan, whether that's to the grading or the drainage, or maybe the house location needs to be tweaked a little bit, but there, I believe that there are alternatives out there that would support that.
Would, in your conversations with the developer, if, if we were to do a, in essence, a trade here? So my, my real concern, as much as I love trees completely, but I'm not as concerned about the one tree. I am concerned about the border and the contiguous neighbors and, and, and the value for the homes that will be new and built there as well for a tree, for a tree view shed. So could we, I'm not saying get something for it, but could we at least get additional? I understand the large trees, that idea, but could we make sure that the development agreement shows that that border on the south side will be heavily treed with the new grading, you know, whatever, so that the impacts on neighbors and the view shed of the new people living there will be enhanced? And so we will trade one tree for whatever, you know, 10, 15 of something that will grow into a really nice kind of a into a really nice kind of whatever view shed. Is that a possibility?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if the direction to staff is to proceed in that fashion, certainly we would work with the developer to prepare a tree replacement plan that would reflect, you know, the intention and the goals stated by the council. I can't speak to, you know, the number or size of those trees that that would be, but ultimately, that would be included as part of any amendment that would come back for the council to take final action on.
So I got to be honest, I'm a little bit torn here, so I'm going to lean on all you, so I hope you have opinions here. So why don't we go down the line here, and we'll start with council member...
So I have a question to Julie, I'm sorry. So what is our policy in terms of, let's say we kept the tree and the developer sold the property to another owner, right? And they bought it, and they cut the tree down. Is that, do we, is city get involved in that aspect of it? Then it's up to the owner, isn't it?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, through the development process, the city works to preserve and replace trees. But once the homes are sold to individual homeowners, it is, they have the right to manage those trees on site as they see fit. So in the R1 zoning districts, there would not be a replacement requirement.
So going back to the replacement requirement, so there is so many inch diameter tree, when you replace it, do we have a specification in terms of each tree should be so, so many diameter, or you can add a whole bunch of them smaller diameter? There is a ratio, something that reflects...
Total caliber inches.
Okay.
But we could encourage staff to increase that appropriately so that that view shed from both sides, actually, we end up with a better product for the city 10 years from now than we would have if we had saved one tree, is where I'm trying to go. I'm not lobbying you, I'm just thinking out loud.
So one more question. So is the staff aware of that? The developers say that tree trunk consists of three different tree. Because of that, is that a new knowledge? If that new knowledge bring different thinking, staff perspective?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so as Mr. Sweeters said, it is essentially a, I'm not the arborist, so it's a three-pronged tree. But on the tree inventory that is prepared by the licensed professional that does all of our, all of the tree inventory work as a part of development, it is classified as a 53-inch caliber tree.
Okay. Why don't we just keep going down?
Yeah, I guess from my perspective, I love oak trees and I would want to save every oak tree. However, I am concerned that if we do try to save this oak tree, that we are maybe creating a potential problem for future homeowners that purchase those homes where they're going to have water issues. And I think, I think that would be, that would be very impactful to them, and I think that would not be a good solution. And I think, as the mayor kind of alluded to, I think it might be a better solution to allow the removal of that tree with the knowledge that we are going to replace it with some other trees that are going to enhance the, both the new lots and the new homes and neighbors to the existing neighbors as well. And so I'm of the opinion that I would, I would allow that tree to be removed and replaced.
Councilmember Nelson.
I guess I'd prefer to see any heritage tree saved. It looked like there was alternate ways to make the water go. They just have to be different. It wouldn't mean that people would have water. Now, if it was that there was no way to make the water go around it, that would be different. Because having dry basements ultimately in the houses probably is a better reason, but never have I heard anybody say there was not another way to get the water around. And it was discussed when they got the agreement for the development. They agreed to it at that point. And I guess at this point, you know, barring unknown knowledge about inability to put water around, I'd say to let it stand.
Councilmember Freiber.
I'm going to concur with councilmember Nelson. We did talk about this. We specifically talked about that tree when you came before us on that. I come off of the planning commission, and as far as we use the term heritage trees. Okay. If Matt Born, staff considers that one tree in 53 inches goes against what we're talking about as far as three separate trees, to me, 53 inches, if it's considered a single tree, that's a heritage tree. That's something I have to really look at. And I agree that if there's any other options on it, and it sounds to me like there's other options possibly for water drainage itself, that's the way to go on it because I'm for keeping that tree.
Councilmember Ryan, I don't know that I heard a yea or nay on that.
No, I did not have questions, and thank you for giving opportunity back again to think. So is there, is, there is no room for staff and the developer work to keep the tree and the water flow properly? Have we...
Julie's saying that there's a way to do that from a staff perspective. That's their judgment.
Staff perspective. Okay, thank you. So I would say if there is a way, then I would say keep the tree.
So clearly, there's three votes there. I am torn. Obviously, my vote isn't going to count now, even if it was yes or no. I'll still vote. The reason I'm torn is that I always want to think about, well, a couple, well, three things come to mind when we approve or disapprove of this kind of thing. One is what's best for the people of Eden Prairie in general. And this one, you know, clearly can go either way. The heritage tree piece probably gets the win there. The second is what's best for this particular development and the contiguous neighbors I kind of feel like it might be best if we truly emphasized replantings and did that border correctly, then it almost goes to removing the tree. And then the third thing is 10 years from now, what's best for the contiguous neighbors. And then it's like, I'm not sure, because that tree could be taken down, that tree could die. Then we should have gone with the replacement piece. So I'm, I would be leaning right now toward taking the oak tree down and replacing simply for that 10-year perspective. But I will, but I'm torn enough that I'll honor the council direction, so you can't change your vote. So I'm just kidding.
Can I ask you another question, though? Like you said, it's a difficult situation.
Oh, it is.
It's a difficult calculation. So what's the probability that we keep the tree and the new owner will cut down anyway because it's so close to it? Is there any, anything that we can...
Mr. Norrion.
You don't have any way to judge the future?
Forty-two percent, no, fifty-fifty.
The crystal ball is cloudy.
With that in mind, somebody, I think, should make the motion. We have two options. The first would be to direct staff to keep it basically the same consistent staff recommendation or make that second motion. In the interest of not having a nay vote and then having to redo, it would be great if one of the people that wish the second motion, making sure I read that right, just a second, reflecting the council's press retreat, no, the first one, consistent with staff recommendation.
I was going to say.
Sorry, had to read that. If one of the three of you could make the motion on the first one, I think, then we won't be in a position of a nay vote.
I guess I'll make a motion that the original statement by the council on that one heritage tree stands.
Yeah, but it would have come on two, three. Yeah. Yeah. I know. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of keeping with the staff recommendation, meaning the tree stays and the water issue has to be rectified by the developer with staff assistance, I hope? All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
I oppose.
Yeah. And I went with the aye because it was a threesome, so you could have done whatever.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Sweeters, I'm sorry about that. I hope that you can make that work and that staff can help you with that. We do appreciate what you've been doing there. And actually, you've been a great developer for 46 years here in the city of Eden Prairie. We thank you for what you've done there, too. All right, we are at the end of our meeting. Anything else to come before the council this evening? Council or staff?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn the city council meeting?
I move the motion to adjourn the city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. I oppose. This council meeting is adjourned.